I, um, yes.
That are here on either side of us. So we will be engaging in electronic voting for the first time tonight. And I share this both to celebrate it and to say that we might need a little bit of patience as everyone gets used to the new method. And as I said to our members in advance, if something's not going right, just give a shout and we are right here for it. With that said, Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Motion to waive the reading of item three and move approval.
Second, Madam President.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open.
Oh.
It is not on my, yes. Uh, may I, Councilwoman Harris?
I do not have.
I don't either. All right, we just tapped the screen. There we go.
I'm good.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryan and Councilwoman Graves.
Uh, Councilwoman Graves, do you need, can, can someone assist? Can?
Thank you.
Okay.
The vote is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations for all of us on our first electronic vote. Item four, please.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item four through six.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman. Um, Madam Clerk, please note, item four through six as received.
So noted.
Item seven.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item seven through 12 and pass for the second time on a roll call vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items seven through 12? Hearing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll and open the vote.
The vote is now open and I will call the roll. Council President Miller.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderbaugh.
Aye.
Majority Leader Espinal is absent. Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graves.
Aye.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peterson. Council President Pro Tempore Pichardo.
Aye.
Councilor Royas is absent. Councilwoman Ryan. Majority Whip Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Anna Vargas is absent. Councilwoman Oscar Vargas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vargas.
Aye.
Yes, Councilwoman Ryan, and please do your electronic voting. Thank you. That vote is now closed and we have 11 ayes and three absent. The motion carries. The matters are passed for the second time on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 13.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of items 13 and 14.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 13 or 14? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer 13 to the Committee on Ordinances, 14 to the Committee on Finance.
So noted.
Item 15.
Motion to waive the readings of item 15 and 16 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 15 and 16? Councilwoman Anderbaugh.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I'm speaking also because our colleague, Councilwoman Royas, cannot be here on item 15, who's the sponsor of this resolution. I just want to note that we've, many of us have heard a lot of concerns recently about enforcement, especially for life at night activities. And we want to make sure that our residents and businesses have an opportunity to have their voice heard in this time limited way, in this time limited working group of the enforcement of city ordinances related to life at night. It's particularly important for those parts of the city where residential and commercial, um, uh, folks are just abutting each other and there are either conflicts or just things we want to work out together. And so I rise in support of number 15. Um, and I'm grateful for you, Council President and Councilwoman Royas, for sponsoring it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please read item 16?
Whereas Jenny Delulo was a daughter of Providence and a resident of the Fifth Ward of Providence. And whereas Mrs. Delulo was a, was a co-owner of the General Tool and Supply Company of Attleboro, Massachusetts alongside her husband Bernard and was known for a diligence that contributed greatly to their success. And whereas, proud of her Lebanese heritage and a committed fundraiser in her home parish of Saint George Maranite Catholic Church located in Cranston, Mrs. Delulo was jointly awarded the Silver Mas- Mas- Masbaki Award, an honor conferred by the National Apostolate of Maranites, two Maranites, for extraordinary contributions of their time, talent, and resources with her husband in 1997. And whereas, Mrs. Delulo was notably a Democratic Committee Woman for the Fifth Ward and an active supporter of varying political campaigns throughout her life. And whereas, Mrs. Delulo was also a deeply devoted and proud mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother who encouraged her husband and children to seek success. And whereas, Mrs. Delulo, having died on November 1st, 2025, at the age of 90, is remembered for her steadfast dedication to the causes, communities, and people so integral to her life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council recognizes the life and deep community ties of Jenny Delulo, and be it further resolved that Councilwoman Joanne Ryan of the Fifth Ward and the entire Providence City Council offer their most sincere condolences to her husband Bernard, her children Bernard Jr., wife Donna, Louis and Janice, husband Nicholas, her grandchildren Elizabeth, husband Daniel, Alexa, Christian, husband Gabrielle, and her great-grandchildren Coraline and Nicholas. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to the family of Jenny Delulo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Ryan.
Just briefly, thank you, Madam President. On, I rise, this is a, a family member for me, on my brother-in-law's mom. But, um, it's a big loss for the Fifth Ward, big loss for our family. Great lady, lived a wonderful life, on, and thank you to my colleagues for, um, voting in favor of this resolution, certainly deserving of a wife, a life well-lived. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Further discussion on items 15 or 16? Councilwoman Vargas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have a, a concern about the number 15. So now we have a group of people that they don't have no businesses and no experience to work on this type of ordinance or this type that we try to help the economy.
Councilman, may I answer that question as the sponsor here? Uh, so this is not related to the other entertainment conversations we've been having. So, uh, the appointments will be made, there will be businesses that include, are included on the working group, but this is not related to the, it's related in as much as we're talking about enforcement, but it is not related to making other changes that have been in discussion in this, in this chamber for a while. So this, this, the working group will act on nightlife as it currently exists in the city of Providence and just have a good conversation and and with enforcement mechanisms and bring residents and businesses together to the table to have that conversation. That does not impact other ordinances that are being, uh, considered by this body. It's not, it's not, it's a, you know, related but not part of.
Can I? Thank you. So we saying this is related, this question to the sponsor, relating, yes, to the whole city entertainment license that we have so far. So is, is it an enforcement problem that we have?
Uh, Councilman, I am happy to engage a conversation. Also, uh, as the chair, it's a little awkward for me to go back and forth with you on this. So I would ask that you are welcome to, uh, support, abstain, or, or vote against, and then we could continue conversation. Here's what I will say. What is clear, and I think each of us in our neighborhoods have an opportunity and have hear from, especially when we have commercial, I think all of us do, have commercial corridors that, um, have, bring businesses and restaurants and bars right up against residences. I, um, in particular, am like a tremendous advocate for the arts and for music and also have seen what happens when, and I think overwhelmingly, um, throughout the city, businesses want to be a good neighbor because they have a lot of good reasons to do that. They're part of our city, they're working together, uh, in our neighborhoods, and they want to, uh, bring, like, business both from outside of the neighborhood and inside the neighborhood, right? In the occasion where there is a business that doesn't, um, respond in that way, it gets very, very hard to move forward with, with enforcing our existing laws. It's harder than it should be for the city to enforce our existing laws and maintain the, the climate of respect, um, and, and do kind of what we need to do. So, this is not, uh, I am, as the sponsor of this, I am assuring you, this is not, uh, about restricting, uh, good culture that brings people together for a connection in events like music and other things. It is an opportunity to discuss some of the ongoing enforcement issues that each of us have experienced in our wards. It's an opportunity to bring, um, residents and businesses together with the Board of Licenses and Police and kind of look at what's working, what might work better, and what we might need state action to support.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Goncalves.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't mean to belabor the points there, but I think the resolution is pretty clear. This is a great way for us to work with residents and businesses across the city to strengthen coordination, and you just enumerated all the points right there, so I don't want to, again, belabor the points. But I do think this is something that we should all be supporting as a council. It's a great way for us to bring our residents, our businesses together, to, uh, work together and, and to think about ways that we can enhance quality of life for those who provide entertainment for our neighborhoods and for those who are, uh, living in our neighborhoods. So I think that this is pretty much a no-brainer, and I hope that our colleagues will support that this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on items 15 and 16? Hearing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open.
Madam President?
Councilman.
Question to, if you want to vote no, and no for one and yes for the other one, how you do this?
Yep. Uh, so, the process in this case is for the, uh, Counselor who made the motion to withdraw the motion.
Uh, motion to withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so we have a withdrawal and a second. And now, Councilwoman Sanchez.
Yes.
Uh, may I please have a motion to waive the reading of item, uh, 15 and pass on a voice vote?
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item 15 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on item 15? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open.
Go on, sorry.
All set. The vote is now closed. And you have nine ayes, one abstention, one no. The motion carries. The matter is approved on a voice vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, Councilwoman Sanchez, may I please have a vote, uh, to waive the reading of item 16 and pass on a voice vote?
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item 16 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 16? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open. Councilwoman Goncalves. Thank you. The vote is now closed. And we have 11 ayes, um, three absent. The motion carries. The matter is approved on a voice vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 17.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item 17 and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Um, can the clerk read this item into the record, please?
Yes, Councilman.
Whereas cooperative enterprises allow workers, buyers, and others to directly own the business they work in or patronize. And whereas cooperative enterprises, particularly worker cooperatives, create stability in economic development by promoting the welfare of the owners and the communities they operate in over mere profit and ensuring that the needs of owners are balanced and met. And whereas cooperative enterprises, particularly worker cooperatives, promote egalitarian decision-making, strengthen democratic norms, and create shared responsibility among members. And whereas, on June 19th, 2024, the United Nations General Assembly declared 2025 to be the International Year of Cooperatives in recognition and encouragement of cooperative enterprises. Whereas, Co-op Month has been celebrated in the month of October since 1964 in recognition of the contributions that cooperative enterprises make to communities throughout the United States. And whereas, through the efforts of labor organizers and aspirant worker owners, the state of Rhode Island has advanced the recognition of worker cooperatives through Chapter 6 of Title 7 of the Rhode Island General Laws enacted in 2017. And whereas, Providence worker cooperatives such as White Electric Coffee and hybrid cooperatives such as Heartleaf Books provide their workers with meaningful control over their working lives while providing patrons superlative and unique experiences. And whereas, the Providence City Council wishes to earnestly recognize the contribution of cooperative enterprises to economic growth, to social development, and to the dignity of working people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council recognizes the contributions of cooperative enterprises to the life, prosperity, and welfare of the people of Providence. And be it further resolved that the Providence City Council recognizes 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives and encourages the city to support cooperative enterprises in its effort to further economic development. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Office of Mayor Brett P. Smiley, to the City of Providence Director of Economic Development, Edwin Carr, to the Office of Lieutenant Governor of, of Rhode Island, Sabina Matos, and to the Rhode Island Worker Cooperative Alliance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Further discussion, Councilwoman Sanchez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you to our city clerk for, uh, reading this into the record. Um, this was put, this was attempted to put in, uh, last month, uh, some timing conflict, uh, denied that opportunity on our end, um, to celebrate Cooperative Month, which was October. Um, as, as we're all aware, um, you know, the economy and, it's really difficult for, for a lot of folks, uh, especially, uh, a lot of people in our communities, um, especially with how much favoritism, I would say, that corporations and, uh, mega billion and million-dollar companies, uh, have right now under this federal administration. It's important that we continue, and I say continue because this council has been pretty consistent on, uh, standing up for our smaller businesses and, uh, more specifically, in this case, our worker-owned, uh, businesses. Um, right now, a lot of these bigger corporations are taking advantage of the difficult, uh, economy and buying up more and more, uh, smaller businesses, and that leads to, you know, uh, a lot of layoffs and lower wages and weaker, uh, worker protections. Um, so this is a, a very small, but in my opinion, meaningful, uh, resolution to celebrate and uplift, uh, all the amazing, uh, worker co-ops, uh, here in the state of Rhode Island. Uh, so I would urge, uh, support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on item 17? Uh, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is now open. Councilwoman Taylor. The vote is now closed. You have 11 ayes, three absent. Uh, the matter is approved on a voice vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, item 18, please.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Anderbaugh.
Motion to waive the reading of item 18 and pass for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 18? Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I mean, we're all aware of, of what we're doing here. Um, this was, uh, planned on being, uh, tabled, uh, because the vote was literally tied 30 minutes ago. Um, obviously, it appears that one of our colleagues is missing. Um, this is something I'm not proud of, but, you know, slimy and, and, you know, I don't want to offend anyone or make anything
I'm sorry, Councilman.
Personal.
Point of order? Uh, uh, under, understanding, Councilman, if you could not, uh, attack, uh, counselors.
Thank you. I just want to stress that, you know, none of this is personal, and at the end of the day, I love, uh, serving with all, uh, 14 of you, um, but I'm going to be walking out right now, 'cause what we're doing right here is ridiculous, and if you oppose this piece of legislation, I would also urge you to, to walk out on it.
Councilwoman Ryan. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to speak on the Mile of History Project. What is before us tonight is a $6.2 million infrastructure investment in our famous historic Corida Benefit Street. Actually, it's the Benefit Street area, otherwise known as the Mile of History. And it's also an expansion of our existing partnership with the Mile of History Association. Moha works to preserve, protect, and promote the historic character of Benefit Street.
I'm sorry, Counselor. May I, at this point, we do not have quorum in our room. May I ask for a...
Motion to lay the item on the table.
And also, we're just going to adjourn for a moment here. Thank you. At ease is the word. Thank you. I shall sit down. Thank you. We're still missing someone.
Who are we missing? We only have seven. We need it.